I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unironed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM, the 30th day of May, 2008. We are convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary; Mr. Leo J. Smith, Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business; Dr. Dennis Degnan, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Mitchell Pescual, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo is just walking in. Can we shift over a little bit? Thank you. Trustee Alonzo is here. Trustee Cruden?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Finnerty?
Here.
Trustee Munoz?
Here.
Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Trustee Velato?
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Here.
President Broderick?
Here. Mr. President?
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting, with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
We will start with our agenda. We will start with our approval of minutes, our acceptance of communications, and everything for this evening's meeting is on our bulletin board. So do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on minutes and communications. Trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up, we have two commendations tonight. I'd like to read into the record. Whereas Alyssa Rosario of Mrs. Mary Lou Kowalski's Grade 9 Honor English Course at Bayonne High School was awarded first place in the freshman division Sister Rose Thiering Essay Contest sponsored by Seton Hall University. On April 29, 2018, she attended the recognition ceremony at Seton Hall and shared her work with the audience. Be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education wishes to extend their sincere congratulations to Mrs. Kowalski's freshman honors English student, Alyssa Rosario, the winner of the Sister Rose Thiering Essay Contest, who demonstrated her ability to overcome intolerance by helping others and providing the impact an individual can have on a society, and this is by the Committee of the Hall. Alyssa, we're here. Come on up. You can sit here. We'll take a picture.
Well done. Congratulations. Hi. Thank you. Should I sit?
Why don't we let the doctor want to go make the presentation first?
There you go. Perfect. Great.
Trustee? I mean, the hat has to be off the dais, too, please. Okay. Our next commendation.
Forty-two of them.
every student with a world-class STEM education, whereas the Bayonne Board of Education encourages and supports its students -- sorry about that. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education wishes to reaffirm its commitment to provide every student with a world-class STEM education, whereas the Bayonne Board of Education encourages and supports its students to utilize said education to compete in STEM-based competitions. Whereas 42 students competed in the RWJ Barnabas Health STEM Showcase, representing the Bayonne School District in various categories, competing with other students in Hudson County. Whereas 13 students earned medals and special awards for their authentic research projects. Additionally, two Bayonne High School students competed in their super-judging round of competition against other high school gold medal winners. Be it hereby resolved, the Board of Education wishes to recognize the outstanding achievements of this talented group of students and their mentors. Furthermore, the Board of Education congratulates them on their well-deserved medals and special awards. Gold Medal winners Alex Mayer's Behavioral Science, Danielle Zimny Environmental Science, Silver Medal winner Cisco Espinoza Animal Science, Francis Labuti Mathematics, our Bronze Medal winners Mark Gummigan Microbiology, Tashu Gupta Animal Science, Angela Ragib Cellular and Molecular Biology, Siti Ali Orga Campos Electrical and Mechanical Engineering, Mark Youssef Medicine and Health, Christian Abledache Animal Science, Martina Keller Animal Science, Nofa Todros -- these are gold medal winners. Nofa Todros Nicholas Arezco Community School, Natalia Siplaski Nicholas Arezco Community School, Sofia Dela Rosa Rio Nicholas Arezco Community School, Catherine Kozinski Nicholas Arezco Community School, Silver Medal winners Karen Iskander Nicholas Arezco, Bronze Medal winners Pavlov Youssef Philip G. Varum Community School, Ashley Avdravo Philip G. Varum Community School, Tanya Benardi Philip G. Varum Community School, Sarah Rafi Philip G. Varum Community School, and these are by the Committee of the Hall. Congratulations, and please come up.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Awards to the teachers, too. Congratulations. Congratulations. If you want to move down.
Come on in. Grab a seat. Sit in behind.
Still Broderick. Little bit. I said it.
Students and parents, you're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to get an early start and work on your homework, I'll give you a few minutes to --
Or just get an early start.
But I'm sure you guys have homework. You don't win all those awards without doing homework.
Getting out now shows how smart they really are.
That's it. We will start with our consent agenda. We'll start with Category A, which is curriculum, instruction, and policy, Resolutions A-1 through A-23, which were done by committee and brought before the full board. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden. Do I have a second?
I second.
And a second by trustee Velato. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category B, Finance Building and Grounds, Resolution B-1 through B-20. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by trustee Desmond and a second by trustee Munoz. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category C, which is personnel, Resolution C-1 to C-17. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Finnerty and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
I vote aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category C, which is personnel, Resolution C-1 to C-17. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Finnerty and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
I vote aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category C, which is personnel, Resolution C-1 to C-17. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Finnerty and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
No.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category C, which is personnel, Resolution C-1 to C-17. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Finnerty and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
I vote aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category B, Finance Building and Grounds, Resolution B-1 through B-20. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by trustee Desmond and a second by trustee Munoz. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category C, which is personnel, Resolution C-1 to C-17. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Finnerty and a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
I vote aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Category C, which is personnel, Resolution C-1 to C-17. And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by President Broderick, a second by trustee Cruden. Trustee Alonzo?
You know, not only is this contract unacceptable, unworkable, but it's definitely unaffordable. It neither meets the current needs of the taxpayers or the students, nor does it really help the school system. I mean, basically, we're just going to spend all the money we just got from the state, and then we're going to spend what we think they're going to give us. And we just simply can't afford it, you know? And it's the particulars that's also another big problem. I really would have liked to see a lot more go to younger teachers, teachers that have been here four, five, six years, putting all the money at the top. I mean, we could definitely do better. So, I mean, to summarize what happened, I mean, City Hall got involved, there was an election, there were secret meetings with our superintendent, our board president, people that say they were campaign managers, you know, there were empty promises, I mean, conflicted trustees were even undermining Bob Clark. Bylaws weren't followed, they were ignored. I mean, there's just too many questions, too much politics, it's too bad for Bayonne. So many things, so many questions. Who knows what's going to happen after tonight, but I don't think anything good's going to come out of this for taxpayers or the students, because if it all goes wrong, we're going to have to do layoffs, and it's going to be like last year all over again. And I know I get to vote first, and this always happens, so after I vote, everybody gets to refute what I say, but nevertheless, I'm still going to vote no.
Trustee Cruden?
Yeah, I do refute what you say. We worked very hard on this. Both sides worked very hard, and I do not agree with some of your allegations. I think they're false. I vote yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Well, if he doesn't want to vote first, he could change his name again, but in any case, I totally disagree.
Oh, are we doing personal attacks? Let's just stick to the votes.
How about you just hit it?
Let's just stick to reporting.
Excuse me?
I do vote. I vote yes. It was worked on by a lot of people and a lot of hard work, many, many meetings.
I didn't say people didn't work hard.
In addition to which, this is, part of this is being paid for, not by City Hall, not by pilot programs, not by anything except a delay in rolling out a math program to make sure, and we did it deliberately for that reason, to make sure, to make sure the money is there, to make an honorable commitment and promise to the teachers who work all year long, every year, with and without a contract. And by the way, you want to talk about conflicts? I have four generations living in this town. Two generations are teachers, the other two generations are students. Those students have parents who are taxpayers. I'm conflicted on every level, but I am empathetic, and I do know my job, and I do know how to work, and I do know how to vote, and I can tell you, you have no understanding of the guide or the issues surrounding the guide for the last 20 some odd years. So I emphatically vote yes.
Okay. I'd like to remind my trustees, as I remind the audience, everyone goes one at a time, and everything goes through the chairman, which is our president, and I'll leave it at that. Next up, trustee Finnerty?
I'd like to comment as well. Unlike some of the trustees on this board, I spent almost 40 years teaching in this district, and I know one thing: Teachers, parents, students, all work together, and without all three working very hard together, not very much happens. Teachers play a very, very integral role in the education of our children, and we have to show them some respect by at least giving them a decent raise. This is a decent raise. Is it, would we like to give them a lot more? Absolutely. Do they deserve a lot more beyond belief? Do they deserve a lot more? And I know that from where I speak. Other trustees do not know what it's like to be in a classroom. Teachers make it work. Teachers with their students, as well as their parents, make it work. I'm conflicted because I'm not liking what I'm hearing, but I have to, beyond shadow of a doubt, vote absolutely yes for this contract. My only regret is I wish it was more.
Trustee Munoz?
I'd like to echo most of the comments that my fellow trustees made up here, but I'd like to point out that the Bayonne teacher overall, especially in steps 1 through 10, are some of the lowest-paid teachers in Hudson County, and I think that this contract goes far to addressing that. Listen, you could get all the fancy curriculums you want, you could spend millions of dollars in curriculums and upgrades and fancy new equipment and textbooks, but at the end of the day, it's the people in the classroom who are going to make this work. It's the teachers. So you know what? I disagree. I disagree wholeheartedly with trustee Alonzo when he says that it's not good for the community, that it's not good for the schools or the students, because usually what's good for the teachers is good for the community, it's good for the schools. So my only regret is I can only vote yes one time. If I could, I'd vote again, yes, over and over. So absolutely yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Everybody on this board knows how stressful this set of negotiations were. We were under the shadow of financial problems last year, and everybody was extremely cautious going forward. Maybe too cautious, maybe not cautious enough. Time will tell. It's an imperfect agreement, to be sure. Not everybody's going to love it, but at the end of the day, that's probably what makes it a good agreement. There's just enough imperfections, just enough stress, that you can be sure that people worked hard. So first, thank you to Mr. D'Angelo and his staff. Thank you to our committee and Mr. Clark for their hard work, because it wasn't pleasant. Too many phone calls let me know that it just wasn't pleasant, but it let me know that an honest agreement came through. That much I'm sure of. It was an honest agreement, and I vote yes for it.
Trustee Velato?
Teachers in our district are, make our district great, and they need to be respected. The way we show our respect to them is by giving them a contract that is fair. Is it the best ever? No, but it is a fair contract, and it is a good contract, and it brings a stability to our district. Our teachers get three full years, plus this one that passed, of a contract. We have not had a contract of this length in years. We, an elected, fully-elected board, are telling our teachers that we appreciate the work they do in the classrooms, and that they deserve to feel safe, stable, when they come to work in September, that they have three full years of a contract. And I vote absolutely yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yeah, I have something to say. The parents, their children, they are our students. The teachers are the backbone of this district. This contract is a step in the right direction, and hopefully it'll only get better. Absolutely yes.
President Broderick?
Once again, we appreciate everything that our teachers do. We know it's been a tough negotiation. Is this a perfect contract? Absolutely not. Do they deserve more? Absolutely yes. But what we can afford, we afford. We tried to do this, we almost, to show the consistency we had since we've been on the board, we almost accomplished this a little over a year ago. And that's when everybody understands that we found this financial deficit that hit everybody and caused the eruption that came after that, and all the tears that were shed and everything else that went on with that. But we've never less cited the fact that we believe teachers should know from year to year where they stand, know what they're going to receive next year. This is probably the first time, and I would, I don't know, maybe somebody could answer better than I, I would say at least probably 25 years where teachers probably know what they're going to be making in the next several years. So I think it's kind of a landmark situation, and I appreciate the hard work. I saw negotiations, and I appreciate the hard work that both sides put in. There was a lot of meetings, a lot of hours, a lot of discussion, and they even got mad at me a couple of times. But I'm glad this is done, and of course, I vote yes.
President Broderick took the comment. He said he wasn't quite sure. I retired after working here fully 34 years, and never in those 34 years did I ever have a contract that went beyond three years at a clip. This is the first time. Mrs. Barbera is shaking her head, because you and I are kind of like almost on the same. We never had a contract that went beyond three years. So I am so happy that we have a four-year contract. It means a great deal. So it's four years.
Next up is Resolution D-3, is a memorandum of agreement between the BTA and the Board of Education, and this is the 10-month secretaries, and this is a three-page resolution. Same thing, it is on our back bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by President Broderick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by trustee Cruden. On that motion and second, trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Absolutely yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
D-4, D-4 is an approval of the salary guide for our 12-month secretary clerk salary schedule for the 2017-18, 18-19, 19-20, and 2020-21 school years. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by President Broderick and a second by trustee Cruden. Trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
This is Steve. Get to abstain.
Yes.
D-4.
Yes.
Yeah, I abstained.
Abstain, thank you. Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution D-5 is approval of a board discretion list. It is a three-page resolution. This first one is D-5 on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do I have a motion from trustee Finnerty and a second by Vice President Wilbeck on that motion? And second, trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
There is a second, Resolution D-6, of board discretion. Is there a motion on D-6?
I make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by trustee Finnerty and a second by Vice President Wilbeck on Resolution D-6. Trustee Alonso?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
D.7. D.7 is there is a need in the Bayonne School District for facilitators for our professional learning community project. There are some additional facilitators which are highlighted on Resolution D.7 on our back bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from trustee Cruden, a second by trustee Velato. Trustee Alonso?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution D.8, appointment of personnel to the extended school year for summer programs and projects. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Yeah, second.
And a second. So a motion by trustee Munoz and a second by trustee Velato. Trustee Alonso?
I vote aye.
And trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
This is...
Yes, I think it's a abstention.
I do abstain.
Yes, an abstention. Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
D.9 is approval of our harassment, intimidation, and bullying report for April-May. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll make that second.
So we have a motion from Vice President Wilbeck and a second by President Broderick. Trustee Alonso?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Abstain.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
We have an addition, which I will hand out to packages, but I will read it. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education desires to sell by public notice the following parcel of land, Block 277, Lot 33, West Ninth Street, Bayonne, New Jersey, 07002, known as the land. Whereas the board has determined that the land being sold has ceased to be suitable or convenient for use for which it was acquired, it's no longer suitable for school purposes in accordance with NJSA 18A:20-5.3. Whereas the land is not part of the district's current long-range facilities plan. Whereas the board has determined it beneficial to the district that sale of the land take place in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 18A:20-6 and NJAC 6A:26-7.4 for a minimum bid amount of not less than $110,000. Whereas the Office of the Hudson County Superintendent of Schools and the State of New Jersey Department of Education Office of School Facilities and Finance have reviewed and approved the proposed public notice of sale of land. Be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education authorizes the Assistant Superintendent of Business and School Business Administrator to solicit bids by request for proposal for the public sale of the aforementioned parcel of land and approves the sale to the highest bidder who meets all the requirements of the notice of public sale. Do I have a motion?
This is a bid process only. It is not the sale, and I vote aye. I move.
Move. And is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by trustee Desmond, and we have a second by trustee Munoz on Resolution D.10, which is being added to the agenda. On that, trustee Alonso?
I definitely agree that we should get rid of the property. Probably just it's costing us more to just own it and insurance and things like that. I think the $110,000 is way too low of a minimum. It should be more at like $175,000, so I have to vote no.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
It might be good to know the assessed value is higher than the minimum listed in this, than it was discussed at finance. But I vote yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
No.
And President Broderick?
Just so you know, this is something that is going to go out to bid. Once that comes back, we can either agree to what the bids were or not agree to them. So it's not a final answer tonight. But it is an area that we haven't been using. We had to go through this county and state to even get approval. And they agreed with us that this is an educationally sound area for us. So at this time, I'll say yes.
Mr. President, I have four cards for the open portion questions. We'll start with Melissa Godeski.
Student counselor?
Yes, but he has to have his card go last. So Melissa Godeski, 178 Avenue F. Melissa, I just have to remind you, three minutes.
Melissa Godeski, 178 Avenue F. I just want to start that this is no in weight of complaints. It's to make aware. Recently, a lot of parents moved to IEP meetings. I'm not sure how they're scheduled. So again, I'm just speaking from experience with other parents. They were not private. My son specifically suffers from, as many of you know, some medical concerns that do affect his educational process. My IEP meeting took place in a room with about six other groups of parents. So I put about three to eight weeks of prep time into my son's IEP to make it easier on the caseworker and to make it easy on the teachers that are supporting my son so we can all come to an agreement. And make it fast because I know other parents have, that need their time too. I only had one teacher in attendance. The stress in that room was overwhelming. So I know there were snowstorms. I know there were things that had happened. But was there a better process or scheduling system that we could utilize or leverage or even look at thinking outside of the box of how we can better do this? Because even parents without special needs children that may be on IEPs or 504s felt the same way I did, that there should have been some more privacy. So again, it's not a complaint. Just to make aware that we should rethink our scheduling process around that for other parents.
I promise itself we'll definitely take a look at it, okay?
Thank you.
I'll get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms... Melissa, listen. Could you do me, do us a favor? And could you email Dr. Wanko a little more of the specifics about what happened that day? I appreciate it.
I just want to make you aware that I was told that that was a normal process. I've been in IEP meetings now for seven school years. I've never had a meeting with six other parents and other meetings going around, so...
Sometimes we get changed and all.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Joe Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, 261 North Plainfield.
I want to commend the board and also the negotiating team because this is a momentous event. Never in my tenure have I ever had any financial security, like knowing what I'm going... That destroys the morale of an organization. And so now at least we have three years of relative peace. But I got to tell you, I am pretty jaded. The proof of the pudding will be the next contract. And as far as I can tell, the monsters that live in the dark places and basements of this district are not gone. They are still there. The causes of all this turmoil for the last 30 years still exist. So I fully, lots of things have changed, but some things have not changed. And sometimes we're not willing to accept that. But anyway, I'm really grateful that you, because now I can go to work and really teach children and not have to worry about, am I really going to get a paycheck or what's going to happen? And you know, the opaqueness of all this process really is a problem. Okay? I realize you guys worked hard, but I have no idea what the issues were, okay? And, and you know, would, I don't know why all this stuff happens. I just, and I don't know how to correct it, and I don't know how you're going to make it happen again. That's my, that's my worry. But as one person told me, now at least I don't have to go to the board meetings anymore. But really, I do. Because I've been reading a lot about post-truth, which says that the idea about post-truth, which is going on in our political system, is that emotion now trumps evidence. And so I'm going to continue to bring evidence three minutes at a clip. And it probably won't make any difference. I have no idea whether my speaking over the last 10 or 12 years has made any difference at all. It was just something that I said, and it happened regardless of what I said. But I got to keep talking. I got to keep bringing things up. Maybe eventually somebody will listen, and I'll know that they listened. And the truth of the matter is, teachers are not only important. They're the, my colleagues and I are the only people in this district that actually deliver education. No board member, no administrator, no janitorial service, no business office has ever generated one iota of education to a child. So when you disrespect and degrade the teachers of this, you are striking at the heart of this district. And I'm going to resist that as long as I can. But I really appreciate you getting this contract settled so that we can move on.
Thank you.
Next up, Matt Prebus, 67...
Bartolato?
I'll give you.
Bartolato Avenue, Little Hurry? On April 15th, the night before the April 16th negotiation session, the BTA negotiating team received several emails and texts from our members detailing an offer that was going to be delivered the next evening by your negotiating team. On April 16th, that offer was presented as written in the emails. Our question is, has there been any investigation on how this happened? President Broderick, you're aware of the situation. All the negotiation sessions going forward, we talked about that. So we're just curious if there's been any investigation, any details on that.
We inquired, but nothing that I could tell you that... I could tell you that the people on our side of the negotiations in that room, none of us said anything. In fact, some of the information that came out that night, we weren't aware of until that night. So it became very interesting because I know, I don't know if we could talk about the guides or something like that, but I remember that was a part of it. And I could only speak for actually Mr. Alonso and Ms. Cruden myself. We actually found out those numbers that night. And so it's kind of interesting that someone was giving you this information prior to...
Well, it wasn't given to the negotiation team because we were just as surprised at when we received the emails that those numbers that were given the night before negotiations were exactly what was put on the table. That's kind of a concern for us going forward, that this information got out.
It is. It's a concern for both sides. And then, you know, if we do find out some information, we'll fix it, that's for sure.
All right, we hope that's the case. Thank you. Excuse me?
I won't let it go. I'll make sure.
All right, we hope so.
And I don't really know what you mean, Mr. President. When you say we didn't know what the numbers were. We found out the numbers that night. I mean, we're the ones that offered the numbers. How did we not know what we were offering?
I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about guides, not the, not the...
Calculations.
Decent figures.
Yeah, I know. We're on the same page.
Next up, our last speaker is our Bayonne High School student, Daniel Isaac. Nice to have you with us tonight, Daniel.
Everybody, before I start, like in a Hollywood movie, but I do agree with teacher contracts. I do agree. So, I can't... So before I start my resolution, I won the election and I will become the Board of Education representative. So since I am the voice of students in Bayonne High School, many students came up to me and they told me that they don't like the bathroom, especially the men bathroom in House Four and Five. I mean, I do have evidence of pictures, but some of them don't have locks. They're in bad condition. I know we're in a tight budget and everything like that, but it'd be nice if we do have renovations. That'd be nice. And President Broderick? I mean, if you guys want to see, you know, we passed. My second thing is, I do respect the security, and I know there's a lot of police officers outside. But is it possible if you can ask each floor just to move the students more in the hallways and make sure students get to places? Because it just gets too crowded in the hallways. And that's another thing students are complaining about.
You got to remember something about that, if I could just interject. You know, we basically have a little over 2,000 students. Because I was up here. And in a place like Bayonne High School, which is really a privilege, everyone basically has their own schedule.
Right.
So we're not in a, in an area where, you know, it's 2,000 students with 2,000 different schedules. So it's a lot of, it's not of like, well, we can send this group this way and we can send that group that way because it doesn't work out. But I know we work on it a little harder all the time, and it's something we continue to work on. But it's not, it's not as simple as, you know, it's like the rush hour on at the Holland Tunnel, I think. And you know, so just to let you know, it's, but it's something we can look at. Go on, I'm sorry. I just wanted to let you know.
That's fine. And that's pretty much it. I know it's the last meeting of the year, so I just wanted to bring that out. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Before we close down, I'd like to ask someone very special to all of us to just say a few words possibly. Trustee Desmond? Somebody may have to read this board.
Life is often full of surprises and ironies. Well, life is often full of surprises and ironies. And while our first instinct may be try, to try to alter things, which I did, it may not be possible or reasonable. Sometimes doing the right thing requires a sacrifice. So as my wise friend Joe Broderick once said, "It is what it is." Meaning, meaning, "Deal with the reality and make the best decisions for all concerned." I'm doing that tonight. Consequently, I must advise of my resignation as a trustee of the Board of Ed effective tomorrow, and I wanted to be certain to be here tonight for the teacher's contract. It was important to me, too. I've had the very unique distinction to be, to have been selected by an appointed board, selected by an elected board, and elected by the Bayonne voters. And I'm honored and grateful for all of these opportunities. I believe I have served honestly and fairly, and I would like to think I was instrumental in helping us steady this ship financially. I am particularly grateful to Leo, Matt, Laura, Gary, Dennis and Kenny, Mitch and Bob, Teresa, who's no longer here, Dr. McGeehan, and Dr. Wanko, and Karen. Where is she? In the back. For their patience, their expertise, and most of all, their dedication in always striving to do what's right for a district on all levels. To my colleagues, I say thank you. I've enjoyed working with you, and it's important to me that I specifically acknowledge trustees Cruden, Finnerty, Ted Gerlach, Mike Lawandi, Chris Munoz, Charlie Ryan, President Broderick, and Vice President Wilbeck. We worked through some tough times together. We agreed and we disagreed throughout, but regardless of individual opinions, we ultimately shared the same goals and values and only wanted to do what is best for every student, every teacher, every taxpayer, every parent. And I believe through the process, we genuinely gained a deeper respect for one another. So I thank you. So to all of you and our new trustees, Alonso and Velato, I wish you well. I know you will give the best of yourselves to the job, and I've learned much from you. There are other people who can teach too, and that were my colleagues. Chris Munoz, remember, it's a renaissance, not a revolution. And by the way, I will miss the sparring sessions. But today has proved for me that you don't always know what the future holds, but it's best to remain open and available for the good things to come. And I was thinking that I actually can come and fill out an index card and actually get three full uninterrupted minutes at the microphone. So thank you for everything.
Trustee Desmond, it's going to be very difficult to replace you. Someone may fill that seat, but no one will ever replace you on this board. I disagree, it is a revolution, and we'll find out soon enough. What I will say is that I feel like I'm losing a sister. She's taught me a lot.
I know where you live.
And something tells me we haven't heard the last of Trustee Desmond, because like me, she loves Bayonne, and she wants to serve. And no better public servant has there been in a long time than Mary Jane Desmond to the Bayonne community. So, Trustee Desmond, I will miss you. I will be seeing you, especially at the diner, but that being said...
Sure turned to pet.
It is. I wish you well, and thank you for all your service and everything that you've taught me.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Motion?
Last time I can.
That's right. Motion by Trustee Desmond. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Trustee Munoz to adjourn. On that motion, and second, Trustee Alonso?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond? Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
It is 8:55.